And then it just gets lifted up and it moves.
I'm going off to.
How's that? Pretty much it, yeah. In fact, just sit up to roll the trees up and then. And leaves again.
Something like Bumshways on, I was so used to being over there.
You feel like, just go like.
I liked the sign seats at school.
Yeah, why did you get the boot out of your sign seat?
I figured that.
You don't need, you don't need the door open, it closes on.
I was safe.
Because after a couple times.
Or if someone ever came in, they'd shoot me first.
Not the.
Well.
I don't know.
Ted was always my sidearm and I could lean over and say, Ted.
Boy, yeah, but he knows what he's talking about. So can't, you could ask me, I'm not going to tell you.
I know.
I asked Lori, so.
That's why I like talking to him.
Can't ask me anything. I mean, feel free, you might not have been answering.
We don't know what we're doing. I got a meeting tomorrow for the Tuesday morning meeting. We can't play.
It's ridiculous they haven't opened up that course. Alex paid good money to be a member there and he can't even get on. Everything, everything else is open. Woodcrest. Don't you play Woodcrest? Bull crap.
Have we, what do we want to do?
Everybody else is open.
Call the meeting to order. First item is the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. We'll make a couple changes on the agenda to help the people that want to come in and out. Uh, is there any deletions, changes, additions to the agenda?
I have several items, but I can probably bring them up under wrong people.
Okay.
Do you want to know what they are?
Yes.
Uh, the Scottson request at Fairfield and Bishop.
Okay.
Um, I have a bill from Grim, Grim Brothers.
Okay.
Landscaping bids.
Yeah.
Um, and the Davis Omar renewal agreement.
Okay, so let's go to number four. And that's the chicken permits. We'll start with 101 Wortley Way. Thank you for being here. We had questions at the last meeting.
That's fine.
And we just, um, I think our questions were what happens at nights, weekends? Cause there's so much activity down there during baseball season and.
Right, so what we've decided to do is we're actually going to, we purchased, I'll just snap to you guys to see this. So we purchased, um, chicken wire, but it's a plastic, so it's safe for the kids. It's unwound and cold. It's gonna, we're gonna, um, enclose the chicken coop a little bit more, a little bit extra, so, um, we will be able to, um, keep safeguard them a little bit more. Um, nights, we're usually there at five and now you can take another walk down through there, probably with the dog, if we're in a possible check on them again then. And, um, the latches on the chicken coop, I'm told are safeguard against animals, especially raccoons, so they can't get into them. And the whole entire chicken coop is all underneath is also wired, so nothing can dig underneath and get into the chickens.
This is very similar to what they have on Sheffield Lane.
This is a rental type.
Yeah, I believe it's the same, it's the same company.
Uh, Langdon, Sarah Langdon.
On the week, we're having two chickens, just the two. Um, on the weekends, I have a family who lives right on the corner of Fort Lee and Wortley, who, um, have a kindergartner who is looking to earn money, so he, they will come down and take care of the chickens on the weekends for us. And then of course I'll go in and try.
A kindergartener.
I'm sorry, what?
Working, getting, getting a kindergarten working already.
Well, they learned from like schools.
For money, for pay.
They were, they lived all these schools, so it's not, you know.
I don't think I got paid for it.
So we talked to the parents and they thought it was a great idea that we would learn how to do chores and take, we have responsibility and plus they're going to get the eggs, so they're excited about that, so.
So this is going to be outside of your fenced in area now, or no?
Yeah.
So it's in the fenced in area.
Gets paid to eat.
So it's right where the, um, we have the, the fencing around the conditioner and the back door, so it's going to be right underneath what is now the kitchen windows and where the two burning bush trees are. And then we're going to just enclose that a little bit more, so that they have a little space to kind of run.
And the code enforcement officers reviewed it. Any comments? Alright, so we need a motion to go ahead and you, before I say, you see, you know, this permit process, if we run into any issues, this can be revoked. We haven't had to revoke it, but it will be revoked immediately.
And Lisa is familiar because they have had chickens in the village, so she is familiar with, um, how the village is and all that.
Yep, okay.
I, I move.
Moved by Dan, need a second?
Second.
Second by Pam, any discussion?
So, so this is to educate the kids that you have down there into taking care of?
Yes, and so.
Animals and?
Yes, and we also will be using eggs, so each week the family will take home the eggs, because they're guaranteed at least two to, let's say, eight, fourteen eggs a week, so the families will get the benefits of having them down there as well. And then in June, we're, um, we've got, um, have a program where they're going to be bringing chicken eggs in, if they're gonna, in the incubator, so they're going to actually see chickens being hatched as well, so kind of a whole different cycle for them.
Do you, do you know the, um, couple that live on the corner, they just moved from next to the cemetery down to the corner of Clinton and Warren?
Um, I know, I know.
They have chickens there?
Yes, and I believe the family that bought the house where they moved from on FM Road used to be one of my families.
Okay.
And they still have chickens, I believe they have chickens there.
Okay, so if you just happen to be walking around, which I know you are a lot, maybe if you said something to them, they would go down and check on things too. They're, they're really a nice couple, very helpful, very concerned about everything. And so, and that, I, what, what's, we discussed before, I don't know.
We're worried with the Little League, you know, we just want to make sure that those kids don't.
Is there a lock on the crocodile or no? I know it's animal proof, is it child proof?
Yes.
Those are the kids.
Plus with the additional, um.
Once they figure out it's there.
The additional fencing around it, um, we will be able to have that latch, so.
That was our concern at the last meeting when you weren't here was, you know, if you're not there and, oh, there are a lot, there's a lot of people down there, they don't all have to be Little League kids, but there's people walking down there to get to the canal and to the, um, uh, all that, so.
We haven't had any issues at all with anybody taken, anybody going in on the, in the program or anything like that, as it's, yeah, and I, I don't foresee it being chickens. I mean, move it would, so.
No, and I'm more comfortable knowing that, you know, if there is a problem, they can come and tow it away as opposed to a structure that you're investing in and putting money into building and stuff.
Right.
So you see how this goes, that may be some option that you want to consider down the road, but for right now, if something unforeseen and unfortunate happens, it's something that, you know, okay, this is not the same idea as what we thought it was and we got, we're just getting rid of it at this point for now until we figure some more things out, so.
Right, and it is.
I'm more comfortable knowing that, you know, that type of thing is happening.
And it is a six month program, so.
Right.
And like you said, if anything happens, whether something happens, I don't foresee anything happening with the children because we are completely, um, putting out some, um, planters around it, so.
Yeah.
They'll still leave it a little bit farther away from them, but they're just.
It won't be your children, but it might be other children that are a little interested to see what's going on.
That's true.
It's kind of ironic that the people that live in that home, prior, I guess prior, were the ones that really didn't want you to go in there.
Um, actually, um, they are the same family.
They are?
No, no.
No, I know, that's what I say.
Yeah, they were actually there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I just.
So it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of.
They're actually, they're pretty.
That's what happens, you know? A lot of people oppose things and then they're gone and then somebody else comes in and say, oh boy.
Right, right.
This is great.
So it should be, yeah, and if, and if any of you have questions, even when you've done it, because I know some of you are down there for the baseball field anyway, so definitely you can raise some questions and ask me about it and stuff and we can kind of look at that as well, too.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Um, I, I voted for every single one of these chicken permits that have come through, even though I opposed the law, um, and I don't necessarily have a total problem with hers, although I see a lot more issues that could come up versus somebody's neighborhood, somebody in their backyard in their neighborhood. But what I really have to ask is, it's a business and I don't foresee, I don't remember this law being written for businesses. And I think we need to consider the impact of authorizing it for a business, because there's other places that might say, hey, well, I want, I want fresh eggs. And all of a sudden they're going to have chickens. So I, I think we need to consider it. I'm not saying we deny this, but I think we need to consider that apple, that side of this. As soon as we do it for her, anybody can come and has a business and say, hey, look, yeah, I want chickens. And they can get them, or ducks. And fresh chicken eggs are fantastic. Full stop, they're great. So why wouldn't they? So, keep that in mind, it is a business.
Understand, but a restaurant cannot sell or serve fresh eggs. They have to be certified.
Okay.
They're not allowed to use that. So I, that, your comments are, are correct?
As long as we consider it.
They can't use them, so. Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? You're all set? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is, um, 303 East Tennessee Street. Uh, we did get one email, uh, from your neighbor, no problems, no issues. We got your pictures too, thank you very much. Very cute. Uh, code enforcement officer has reviewed, um, this is the look of it.
That's inside.
Are you building this?
He's going to build one.
Okay, and it is going in the back.
Did you just say you were going to build whatever you were told to build?
Can you see?
No.
Oh.
Ready?
Going behind. He would never say that.
No, it looks great.
Everything's good? You heard the line that I just said, this is a permit that can be, if we have any issues with the neighbors or anything? Okay, alright.
I make the motion that we approve this chicken permit?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're all set, thank you so much. I know you guys wanted to get in and out, so you got it. Good to see you both. Okay, next is the meeting minutes of, uh, April 12th, 2001.
Make a motion, make a second minute?
There was one.
2021, sorry.
Um, that, plus the actually, I had in there that she said she received about seventeen letters, she said, no, she actually said she received some letters, so I changed seventeen to some.
Okay. Uh, we need a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Lori, I have a couple changes. Uh, above the, um, second page meetings, uh, minutes, March 22nd, 2021, that paragraph above it, I actually, when I read that statement, it's to comply with this executive order. Can you make sure we have that executive order number in there from the governor's office? And then. The fire department, uh, Chief Hildreth, um, it turned out to be sixty-five hundred, not sixty-nine, so it was sixty-five hundred for the, uh, for the, the John Deere tractor.
Um, it's totally different.
No, he did with the, the abstract.
Oh, okay.
He, we only paid sixty bucks.
Yeah, but I did say sixty-nine.
No, I understand that, but the, the reality is we only paid sixty bucks. Any other changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is abstract twenty, dated today, and the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Make the motion to accept the.
Second.
Moved by Pam, seconded by Dennis. Dan, did you go through?
Yes, I did.
Good. Pam, just for the record, there is one in there for you, so we need to make sure that the, for the Easter egg hunt, so, anyhow, we do that for one of the trustees, we should clarify, if there's something question that, so. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is the Bergman contract. Um, so I need a motion, we had talked about this, uh, before, uh, the fee is, is, uh, up to thirteen thousand dollars. I talked to Assemblyman Sterpy's office, um, and he has agreed. Um, we just need to get the ball rolling, so I need a motion to authorize the mayor, with approval of council, to sign the agreement with Bergman and Associates for the Loma review.
So moved.
Need a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So we just finished the budget workshop. Uh, Lori has inputted the numbers in, so, um, the total appropriations for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget is, um. Apologize, hold on. Lori told me to go to the right page, I went to the wrong page. Six million, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, two hundred and sixty-four, forty, a, a decrease of point six-four percent from the previous year with a rollover carry number of fifty-four thousand, nine, one, six, with all the changes that we made.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dan, seconded by Mike.
I would like to, um, thank, uh, both, um. Mark and Lori and, and as well as Paul Hildreth with the, uh, fire department and the, uh, Fabmassive with the DPW, which were the major, uh, parts of the budget for the, uh, due diligence that they, uh, put forth. I would like to say that this is entirely different than we used to do a budget. We used to have people come in with a yellow pad and go through it, uh, item by item, what they were going to do. So Paul is here, so as an example, he would come in and say, we gotta buy eighty-five rolls of toilet paper, and he would say what that was supposed to be, and then that would all go under. And then, this was one of Mark's favorite things in the past, um, there was always a miscellaneous, and Mark would say, what's miscellaneous? That was before Paul.
Right.
But, uh, there was a lot of, uh, give and take and, uh, things like that, and, uh, you know, we have a new method of doing it, I'm not saying whether I like it or not, I like the old way, but, um, you know, we are modernizing, modernizing, so. Once again, thank you to, especially the four of you, I hope I, and maybe Karen too, and I, I hope I didn't leave anybody out.
Pam, any comments on the budget?
No.
Dan?
Well, my, I, I agree with Dan, thank all the, the department heads and how much work they put into making sure that we could meet our budget and, um, I like the fact that we've managed it and, and we've gotten through most of this pandemic and done a lot of very good things to make sure that we're continuing to provide the extremely high quality levels of service that we do, uh, in all departments, so appreciate the effort, everyone, to do that.
Okay. Mike?
Well, just a couple things, just to echo Dan and Dennis and, and thanks, thank you to everybody that put the budget together, they did a very good job, um, to the point of how the budget was done, when I first came on the board, it was done differently, like Dan just mentioned, it was, a lot of people put together their wants and their wishes onto paper and they brought it to us, and then we had to kind of listen to them and determine where to make cuts, where to make additions, what to do. Um, this is certainly, uh, the way the budget is currently done, was given some parameters at the beginning to the department heads. I believe it does, although it's a little more work probably on their end to, uh, really look at things very, very closely, it's a little easier to know exactly where we're at with things ahead of time and not just arbitrarily cutting this or adding this or that. So, um, although the process is different than when I began, it is, um, I feel a little bit better processed because everybody kind of goes into the, uh, budget process with the same parameters, the same goals and the same interests, the village board, the department heads and everybody, and I think it's been helpful, so thank you all for your work on it.
Thank you. Um, just so everybody knows, on Saturday I did a YouTube video, um, of, I went line by line by line by line, it's about thirty minutes, and it just goes over the revenues and it goes over each line. Uh, just to try to, we talked about this at the last meeting, it was a suggestion of one of the residents, I thought it was a good suggestion, so Saturday I came in here, had somebody tape it, uh, and so it is on our website, it goes through every line.
I saw part of it.
Yep, so I tried to do my best to explain what happens in this budget, uh, but I also echo everybody's statements, thank, special thank you to Lori, you know, we spent a lot of time together the last, uh, six weeks, putting this together, the department heads, thank you so much, uh, not only for this, but everything that you do every day, um, and we will work, uh, and make sure that we get, uh, the fiscal year closed out, uh, and try to get everybody caught up on the projects that we need to get caught up financially, uh, so that we can start and, and use this budget as our footprint for next year, so. With that, we need a motion, or we have a motion, we have a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So we go from budget to marijuana. So all of you should have a copy, if not, we'll get you a copy. The state, as all of us know, oh, I think I have copies for everybody.
Mark, what did you name your, um, video?
I'm not sure, Karen put it up for me today.
Thank you.
So, the, the state did a nice job, I have spoken, so, let me back up, the state passed this law, um, but it gives the village and the towns authority to, you know, opt out, um, or they also give us other mechanisms in their law. So far, the town supervisors, the three mayors, the police chief, have met, uh, we also have conferred with Senator Mannion, Assemblyman Sterpy, uh, Superintendent Deziato and Superintendent Craig Tice of the FM School District, try to figure out what the best way to do this is. Uh, at the end of our meetings and our consultations with the school district, the fire chief, the police chief, we felt it was in the best interests of our communities to vote, to have the communities vote, um, to opt out of retail sales, but then have a vote, so that the public has their voice heard on what they feel they want in their community. This is a, a very hard decision to make, there's pros and cons on both sides, but I think the public has a right, their voice has, should be heard, and I think it's the right thing to do. I don't think a government body that affects our community as greatly as it does should make this decision, I think the public should make this decision. So, uh, we have to have a, uh, there's, Ted's going to go over this, but there's things that we have to do legally to do this, and the other three villages I know have pulled their boards, uh, just to see what their general consensus is, I'm not sure on the town yet if Ed's pulled the town yet or not, but we are unique in the, in the town man list because the police, if one entity opts out, one doesn't opt out, what's going to happen? So we're trying, everything we do is trying to be in unity, so that's why the three mayors and the town supervisors are met. Does anybody feel any differently than that at this present time?
No, I'm willing to vote.
I think it should go to a vote, is there any?
Go to vote. I think it's a great idea.
Before the vote, though, I mean.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Oh, that's an angle.
Okay, I'm not, just, I will be right up front. I'm not a hundred percent, I'm, I don't know a lot about marijuana or the laws or everything about this, I just know what Ted and NICOM and Lori have helped me pull together, so just, I'm not an expert on this and.
No, but one thing I'd like to note is, and I mean, this has been a controversy, um, if you opt out, you aren't part of the revenue.
Correct.
Correct, correct.
Okay, now, but.
But then, so say all three of us opt out and the town said yes, I'm just using it as an example, not saying what, the town would get all the revenue.
Okay, now wait a minute, if, right now there's sales tax being charged here and here, we don't really get the sales.
We don't get, at the present time, we don't get that.
There's an additional tax that would be charged on this.
Yes.
And how would they figure out whether we got that? I think, I think we have to inform the public when they, before they vote on something like this, above that. How would they figure out how much?
There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot, we would probably lay a, impose a link throughout with the actual law and how, what we work. You know, if we opt out of it as a village, if the town doesn't opt out of it, it just, they can't, there'd be no sale of it within our village, but the town could still do it.
And if you read here, it says, you know, there's, for the villages, the perif, permissive referendum may be triggered by either, one, a petition filed by the village clerk signed with qualified village electors, and then a number equal to twenty percent of the registered electors in the previous general election, or B, by the board of trustees adopting a resolution submitting the local law to a referendum of the voters for their approval.
I, I agree.
So that's what I would like us to do is.
Yeah, I'm okay with a referendum.
I agree, but I still want to know, how do they figure out what part of that, if we did approve it, how would they figure out how much we get?
I'm go, I don't really know, I mean, the gas is never selling and it's really not a quarter.
Three percent, three percent for the town and the village that it's in, and then the county gets one percent, the state takes the four percent.
Three percent, though, of the total county?
No, of your municipality, so I'm just, let's just say it was sold at four twenty-five East Tennessee Street, and say they sold a million dollars, we would get, and say there was, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars worth, or eight, eighty thousand dollars with the sales tax, we would get three percent of that.
So we.
Split between the town and, and the village, because the town's going to have increased costs with, uh, police and their issues, the fire department's going to have costs, increased costs with their issues.
So if the, and I don't know if you know the answer to this.
Could it be the amount of money spent within the village, which would be the three percent?
Yes, only what's in the village of Fayetteville. If, if, say, the voter said, yes, we were okay with it, and say one went.
At the square or something.
Right.
It's going to be a tough job figuring that out.
So if the village, if the vil, and you may not know this.
Well, they're going to have tax receipts.
If the village says yes to it, and the town says no to it.
We have to work on that.
We still have to give the town the money?
The town would take, the town, if the town, if we said, if our residents said no, let's just say our residents say no, and the town residents say yes, we've said no, so there's nothing in our village.
There's nothing coming to us.
But say it's at the town center, then the town can like a hundred percent?
If the town says no and the village says yes, are you asking if they get a share?
That's what I'm asking, do, does the town get a share, or we don't know that?
It's confusing to me, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're not sure.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to play it out in my head.
It is confusing.
It is confusing.
It is confusing. And that's why, again, I think the voice, I mean, when you hear from the police chief and you hear from the fire chief and you hear from the superintendents of schools, I mean, they all have major concerns.
So here's my.
We have to listen to those concerns.
I've got a lot of questions.
I told you on, Ted, do you have anything to add before I, uh, answer, try to answer Dan's questions? Did I put it pretty much?
No, you did pretty well.
Okay.
Under the legislation that the state adopted, each municipality has until the end of this calendar year to opt out of allowing sales and consumption. If you don't opt out, then it's over with, you can't opt out later on.
Sales and consumption?
Yeah.
In a, in a public place? Consumption is, like, right now, we already have a law that says.
That's my next, that's my next question.
We already have a law that says no smoking in parks, no smoking on village property.
But we could on my patio.
If we don't opt out, could they go to Beer Pond and smoke it?
No.
No. What if I, what if I grow it?
Does the no smoking rule trump even this?
You are okay to grow it.
We're told yes.
Living it with ease.
Even though, okay, yeah, I know. I know what they are. Okay, so I can grow it, but I can't sell it or, but I can only smoke it in where? All right, beautiful.
What's that?
Do we have control over how far distance apart that stores can be come up in a community like?
You do have some control under the statute. I forget the terms they use.
It's within 500 feet of a church or a school or something like that, so I don't know if we could change those parameters.
That's liquor.
Well, we have that for the, I'm just gonna use the word adult entertainment places. We have that law already on the books.
Right. Was your question, Pam, like, like a pizza place, could you open a store next to a store? Is that what you're saying? Don't put the churches or the schools into it.
Right, that would be natural. I wouldn't want to buy those kinds of things. But my biggest concern was it, given the popularity, I wouldn't want too many of those types of stores in the community. It seems like there'd be a favorable thing to have it for the revenue and such. But I would want to have very few of them, have a limit on how many could do business in our community.
We'd have to look at that to see if you could.
Yeah, I don't think they can do that.
That'll be a tough one.
Well, not if, not if they had to be spaced apart, because then there would be only so many that could come up in our community.
Yeah, I think we'd have to research that one.
There's a liquor law with regard to schools and churches.
Right. So if you guys are okay with the, the idea of a public.
Well, definitely with the referendum.
Right, so then I'll have Ted draft a local law. We'll discuss it at the next meeting.
I don't think so.
And then we'll, we'll schedule a public hearing. I'd like to get it done sooner than later so that other municipalities know what we're doing.
I could be wrong.
Somebody's gonna get asked a lot of questions, Ted.
Ted, people can't sell it out of their home, right?
No.
You've gotta have a way to sell it legally. The state is, they're gonna generate all sorts of regulations to be able to.
The sales.
There's a major restriction, like with alcohol, you have to be 21 years of age or, you know, can't be imprecipated to purchase it.
Yeah.
It's very similar to alcohol.
So we're basically gonna have a referendum here?
Yes, correct. Each municipality has to hold a referendum vote.
Okay.
Unless they do it a different way. But right now, the general, Manoa, I think, is, is in the same vote as we are. I haven't heard what Manlius has said, but we all, they agree that a public referendum is the right thing. And the town board, I think, just has to discuss it at their next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all. Next is tree commission appointments. I have two. These are to fill regular positions. First is a lady who's lived in the village for the past 10 years, a retired veterinarian. Her name is Holly Koenig. So we need a motion?
So moved.
And both of these have been reviewed with Leslie. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the second member is Richard Halpin. And they met this weekend, so. So Phil, we have two regular members and two associate members.
So moved, so you want us to?
Yeah, moved, moved by Dennis, seconded by Dan.
I, I read the resumes. It's amazing. They're great.
We're hoping, we need two more, so two more associate members, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pam?
I have two people. I've reached out to two people that I'm pretty sure are gonna come on.
Okay. Okay, DPW trustee Small.
Okay, so the DPW is still under lockdown. If anyone needs anything from them, they're welcome to call 315-637-6065 for Bluebans or other Department of Public Works questions or comments. Sanitary sewers, again, just a reminder that the Onondaga County Department of Water and Environmental Protection has taken over. They're still, you're still welcome to call the DPW who can coordinate with them as far as issues you might have with your sewers. We talked at the last meeting about the storm line under the road of Pine Ridge at Salt Springs. And we're looking into slip lining a replacement of that.
Yeah, we talked today. It, the, the number that we got to slip line it was, was outrageous. So what we decided to do today was, we're gonna move the cones. It's temporarily working.
Yeah.
And then when we do the project with Slate Hill, we're gonna see what the cost would be to have, when they're mobilized, to have Slate Hill help us out and do that.
Leger Dyke at Route 92, cleaning will be going on there. Playground equipment for Colter and Washington Parks will start after the sidewalk work, which the sidewalk work is down a little bit in the next item here. The sidewalks have been poured across Genesee Street and up Mott Road. And.
They look great.
Yeah, I'll get back to that. But I'm just saying the sidewalks, because the playground equipment won't be started till after the sidewalks. But currently, the sidewalks look very nice. They've been installed. And they are working on putting the topsoil around the sidewalks, and then hydro seating would be next week. To go back to the playground equipment, I would make a motion that we would hire Gary Way at his hourly rate that we pay him to help set up and install the playground equipment.
Awesome, or second?
Second, moved and seconded. That's a good idea, so.
Yeah, just as an extra handle.
Can we fund it through that money that's already left in there?
Yeah, yeah, it'll take, yeah. We might have it in the regular labor line. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Limestone Bishop Brook, I don't know if you have any more update on that other than?
No, we're just waiting for the meeting, the kickoff meeting, which is hopefully in the next week or two, so. They don't start until the, you know, end of May, so.
And then Bridges Walnut Street and West Franklin Street ongoing?
Both, both grants are applied for.
Both grants are applied for.
Yeah.
Onondaga County Water Authority road cuts at 118 Redfield Road. Patch will be redone. Pat met with them today. A right-of-way permit, I just gotta finalize that.
Yeah, so let's sit down and go, he gave a copy to Lori, so if he gave it to you, let's just review that.
Yeah, okay, yep. And on purchases, you have the papers for both of them.
Do you wanna talk about the bat camp? Didn't he talk about with us?
Yeah, this is.
What do you mean by, what's he mean by will be redone?
What are you talking about?
Which one?
The road pitch?
So when they cut it, they didn't, they didn't cut far enough back, and what happens is it collapsed.
Yeah.
And we had a conversation about it today, and the town's probably having the same, it's the problem. I mean, when they cut these roads, they're expensive, you know what I mean? And how, and they cut back and they don't cut back enough, and then we have to go back and fix it. And they're giving us grief, so he met with a guy and said, listen, this is unacceptable. You gotta cut farther back, 'cause what he did is he only cut back three quarters of the way, and then it collapsed. And then blamed us. We're like, no, 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 the road was fine before you went in there.
And then, they did try to patch it at one point. It was so bad.
Yeah.
You could lose the vehicle.
So this is different than the Bobcat.
So they're gonna do it.
Yeah, this is not the same thing, but this is, but this is, we talked about this.
Is the compact roller also on the purchase?
So these two, the first one is, is to replace the Kuboto. And that was the one we bought. I don't even, what year was that one, Lori? Do you know?
That was 10 years ago.
Oh, 2013, so it's eight years old. We bought that as a demo unit. So with trade-in, and the total is $43,594.48. And that's to replace that excavator that we use pretty much all the time. So, and we have it in the reserves to, to fund that.
So that's this?
Yes, that's number two.
So make motion that we approve the purchase?
Okay, we need a second?
Second. Mike, do you know if that excavator has the, is he able to like, clean out like, leg canal or whatever, things like that? Do they have that scoop on it?
It has 24-inch teeth, 12-inch teeth, 36-inch grading, power tilt, which is like a $5,000.
So 12 or 24-inch teeth would be the.
You can't reach down there, man.
Yeah, I wonder how.
What they have to do is hook.
Oh, right here. Extended arm package.
Oh, there you go.
66, it says, well, it's an E66. I'm not sure if that's a 66-inch or, you know. Boy, these things get Bluetooth, keyless start, I mean, it's not the Bobcat that we used to own.
No, but you're, I, I agree.
Yeah.
We gotta do something.
Let's, let's keep, Mike, let's see if they're, they might need an attachment, different type of bucket. That might be worth.
I'm not sure if we, if this would work with, because the town, I think, has one, and this might work with theirs. So we just borrow their attachment, their, I don't know the name of it, but.
Yeah, 'cause a little TLC could be planned on. Maybe not this year, but maybe next year or something.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the compact roller?
Did he give you a quote for that?
Did he give you a quote for that?
He just has it here. It's the $15,300. He didn't give us a quote.
Okay.
We will have this contract later this week, he said.
Okay, so we'll.
So do you wanna approve it with your?
Yeah, why don't we do that? So we need a motion to authorize the mayor and the clerk to approve if it meets with the.
So moved.
With Patrick and the, and our reserves.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
With approval of council. Any questions? So moved by Dennis, need a second?
I second.
Okay, Pam? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The only other thing I have, and we could talk about it at the stop sign, but might as well talk about it now, is on Warren Street at Genesee Street, there's a no truck sign. And it's on the east corner, so on the corner where Karen and Bill Harris live.
Yeah.
The sign is very faded, and I'd like to get permission to replace that sign where it is.
Yeah.
And/or maybe if we need a second one. I don't know. They're saying the trucks are not seeing it. And with the construction of those townhomes down on Hill Street, with all this stuff going on, they're coming, there's a lot of truck traffic coming down Warren Street. Walnut Street's closed off with the bridge, so they don't go Walnut and they don't go Spring, so.
Okay. If it's faded, that doesn't, that can just get done. There's two here that I just told.
Okay, so we're not, we're not adding a sign, but I will talk to Pat about it. And if we need to add a sign, I will bring it back to the next meeting. It's not gonna affect it in a week's time. I'm just telling you about the situation, so. If anybody has any ideas, if you look at it and you have any thoughts about how to make this, I'm thinking the sign needs to be tilted a little bit more, maybe. Kinda designed for traffic coming either way, but I'm assuming most of the traffic comes up the hill and turns right there as opposed to left coming down the hill, so.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause these two were faded, so I just told Danny to replace them.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make people aware of it, so if you needed to do something, we could. Thank you.
So I have a question for Mike. I know we approved the change to the one-way street down Limestone. When is that scheduled to happen?
The striping?
The, well, we're gonna stripe it for parking spaces and make it one-way.
We need to finalize that plan.
I thought we were looking at the plan one more.
I thought it was done. I mean, we approved it.
It's done. We just, the board needs to look at it one more time. I can add it to the next agenda. We can.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I thought we already approved it.
I don't know if it's planned. I just got approval or not.
I don't remember if we did.
I don't remember approving.
I don't remember approving it. I know we talked about it, but we haven't done it. That's my memory. I don't know what's.
We have to go back and look. I thought we did last year, waiting for the spring.
We talked about it last year, but we were waiting to see what the state's comments were. So I don't think we ever finalized and approved it, so.
The state has approved it.
I'll add it.
I thought it was ready to go, honestly. I've been kinda, I thought it was done.
We got an approval from the state, Lori?
We were waiting for an email from the state on something for that.
Yeah, I have to look back, honestly. I'm not sure.
Yeah, because that was our holdup last.
I don't remember getting the state approval.
Yeah. I'll talk to you next week, Lori. I'll talk to you, Lori, I'll talk to you this week on it.
Okay.
See if we can dig it out.
We're gonna have to put out.
Doesn't matter. I mean, whatever, whatever you guys decide.
Just on the, from WEP, they are working in Brookside. If you've noticed, the trucks, they were working on Saturday. I saw them down at the lower cashin. So they have so far done 19,788 linear feet of leased sewer main in the village of Fayetteville and the town of Manlius, and of deficient sections. Specifically 54 house laterals in the village of Manlius also. Additional work continues, both lining the main sewer line and public portions of sewer slatters in the village of Fayetteville and Manlius. Joint testing and sealing efforts in the town of Pompey. So we are, they are doing a fair amount of that slip lining, so. Fire department, applications.
Yep. Okay, here's my best try. True. Yustinsky.
Yusitinsky.
Yustinsky. I know, I've known them forever, and I can't say their name. Fire police, ambulance driver, exterior, interior, for true.
Moved by Dan, need a second? Second by Mike. All approvals in place?
Hogan Zachary.
Cold on? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hogan Zachary, firefighter, driver, ambulance driver, aid, and almost everything, exterior, interior. Hogan Zachary, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Dan, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nicholas Alice. Ambulance driver, crew. Crew, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Jacob Crawford, exterior, interior firefighter, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stacy Boyack. Driver, exterior firefighter, interior firefighter. Firefighter.
Moved by Dan, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that all off of the recruitment?
So I was gonna give you, 51 leads we've gotten off that recruitment site so far. This is the next class, the 815th and 88th in the class.
Nice. Congratulations.
Yeah, no, we're doing, we're doing well. We just take our lumps. You get some, you lose some, you get some, you lose some, so.
Good. Purchases. Anything, questions? So you're, I don't know if you heard, but the lease, everything was put in and so.
I said with Lori when she put it in.
The striker, everything's in, so you just need to, I got approval of council to sign the agreement, so.
Oh, he's, no kidding?
No, no, I got approval to sign it. I don't know if you've seen it yet or not.
Well, I sent it to him.
Okay.
That's what Stryker said. It's one of their holdups. I always have to go back and forth.
But I'm saying it's in the budget, so.
I'll email you tomorrow, Chief. I have a couple of questions. You'll have to like, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
I can leave.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any questions? All right, code enforcement. Good evening, Michael. Before we start the, the storage shed, I just wanna give everybody a little context. I have a picture. I think I emailed it to everybody.
I know who she is.
Did you see it? Pam and?
I've been there.
Yeah.
I know who she is. That was her cloud of, uh.
So this is a new one, and again, most of the time, these are items that we've never had to address before. But obviously, we have to look at this. This is a, I'm just trying to get this picture up. A tent that is erected next to, between two properties. Chief, you'll remember this house.
I saw it.
Remember that house?
Yep.
It's one of those portable. So we don't have a code, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. We don't have a code that deals with a structure, what they deem as a structure, what we don't deem as a structure, so. Right. So we kinda have a, not a loophole, but a, you know, a little bit of a, you know, do we wanna regulate tents going up? It's graduation season and yada, yada, yada. I don't think that's what, what we wanna do as a board. But we obviously have an issue here because people are storing cars and storing, there's stuff stored in it. So it's obviously an issue, so. Did I hit it right?
Well, yeah, technically, the defining structure, you know, a tent is a structure. We have a number of conditions for tents. Under the state code or state, you know, those rules and regulations are probably very, states have a thing under 144 square feet is excluded from having to have a building permission. Alabama, Fayetteville adds up to 95, that's a structure under 144 square feet, so they added this into it. Technically, it's a structure, but they're generally up and they're down, they're removed. They don't hold the snow loads and they don't last over winter. You get into the permitting process for these tents, and you have to, you know, abide by the setbacks. 10 feet to a structure. 5 feet to a lot line. So. You need more variances for these tents. You know, some people would use them for, you know, parties or cookouts or somebody will, you know, clean up the garage, somebody will put bottom mowers in there, you know. You know. Common sense prevails on what to put on, you know, inside, but. So I looked into other, another municipality, Village of Liverpool, regarding tents and pods. Those come and go. Well, sometimes people take advantage of it. They stay there four, five, six months or here. We don't have anything on the books for that. So if you wanna review, you know, what the Village of Liverpool came up with and adjusted accordingly to our village.
Does that deal with, would this take care of that issue? But it wouldn't, would it require someone to, you know, just say, I'm having a graduation party? Would I have to get a permit to put a tent up?
Or?
Would I have to get a permit to put, say, a 20 by 20 tent up for a graduation party or a shower or something like that? Does it require that? 'Cause I don't wanna, I don't think we wanna do that.
No, we don't, but we could get around it.
Well, you could also say if a structure's up more than.
Could say if it's up 48 hours or something, yeah.
They have to call the village office. We get whoever's working here then. Hopefully Lori will still be here and give them more things to do and say, you know, can we have permission to do this? It'll be up for two days and down.
Yeah, anything over two weeks, I think, where they had it structured. Or if it's tied in with building permission, then it's, you know.
Right.
There's a consideration.
Right, because if someone gets a build, say, say they're redoing their kitchen or something like that, and they get one of those tents and put everything in there, you know what I mean? It's not, two weeks is pretty quick to get a kitchen renovated, so.
Are you thinking of someone that might do it?
No, I'm done. God, I lived in the basement.
I liked, one part of the law I liked was the two-week thing within 100, once within 180 days. That was great. We need that in a couple of our laws.
It's got some good fundamentals to it. I think you should read it, adjust it accordingly.
Have you given it to everybody or no?
Yeah.
Your tenants were.
Okay.
He mailed it to you?
She emailed it to you?
Okay. Yeah, all right, so I'll put that on the next agenda.
I mean, I, the thing that bothers me about it, I mean, I, the thing itself bothers me. It's on the property line.
Again, there's neighbor versus neighbor issues.
Well, it says in here, yeah, that can't be in the part of the property.
So, I'm just letting you know. Mike and I were there. We met with him. It's absolutely, that's the hardest thing we have to deal with, so.
You said I knew it, right?
Yes.
I know it by.
She knows. She says she knows.
Oh, wow.
Okay, next is the fee schedule. Mike has proposed. All of you should have a copy that I put on your thing of some increases. And red is, I have the old one here, just to give you an example.
Red is the same.
Red is the new fee that he wants to change it to. Most went up twenty-five or fifty dollars. And this reflects, I think, more of the time that it takes to get these permits, you know. The one I thought was, you know, I wanted to check, Mike, is, is fifty dollars enough for a pool? Don't you have to go back three times, yours?
Well, plus twenty-five cents a square foot.
Oh, for the, okay, okay.
So, I mean. It's kind of minimal for pool inspections.
Okay.
Probably twice, maybe three times.
Because I know you have to, yeah.
I sent an email today.
I'm mainly in agreement with it, but I would like to go over it.
Right.
For the next meeting.
Okay.
But look at the, look at the date that, that the old one.
Yeah, I see. When did you send it, Mike?
Uh. Four twenty.
Four o'clock or so.
Four twenty, right.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
It kind of breaks down what I, my thinking. What I deleted or adjusted. There are a little redundancy in it, you know, like the deck. With a deck with a roof and a deck without a roof was a different charge. It's like, and porches, porches with a roof. These are decks and porches under the same title.
A deck.
Be, you know, you still have to go do the same amount of inspection.
A deck with a roof has got to be less than a deck with a roof.
Well, we still gotta go through the price.
And again, going, going back, Mike, you know, I forgot, under this, you know, under the storage shed. I mean, if the resident's still not happy with our interpretation, that's what the zoning board's there for. So they can go to the zoning board and ask for an opinion. So if the, if the resident is listening, if you're not, after we're done looking at this new law, if you're not happy with that, you can always go to, get an interpretation from the zoning board. That's what they're there for.
But, you know, tents pop up, you know, it's hard to keep track. I'd be chasing my tail with tents. What's your, it depends on the, you know, I mean, happens, that's the thing.
So what I'll do is I'll put, we'll put this on the next agenda too, but between now and the next meeting, if you guys have questions, you know, Mike, I'm going to give this back to you just because this was there. I don't want to lose it because this is the original.
Dan, you said you want to review the fee schedule more?
Yeah, I just, we should look at where we are now.
I want to look at it because I went through it with Mike earlier today.
Yeah.
And it, it looked pretty good to me, but I came up with some questions that Mike answered. I might have a couple because I just did it fast.
I agree. You want to make sure there's nothing that we burden the residents with.
No, it doesn't matter. I'll just not. I'll wait. Can you wait?
Yeah, there's some things you would, you have to go do, three or four inspections for, you know, issues reviewed plans and issues for that. Three or four inspections for like seventy-eight dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's important, though, that we, we would know that. So I, I mean, I. Any, if you have to go one time, is that, that, that should be less than if you have to go three times. And that's something I would like to take a look at.
Well, and the other thing, it did, you said you increased your square foot rate, but it's not red in here, so is it, that's the one, that was the one question I was going to ask. Is it, did you take the, like, on residential new construction, it says fifty cents square foot? Is that the same as it has been? Or did you take that up from twenty-five cents?
The square footage, I think, we kind of left it on.
Okay.
Increased the fifty to fifty dollars to seventy dollars.
Right.
And the square footage is almost fifty cents a square foot that was left alone.
Does it take you longer for a bigger, does it take you marginally longer for a bigger house, or is it a lot longer, or is it?
It depends which being built. I mean, if you got a house. Three floors, you're there three, four, five, six, seven times. Re-inspections, finals, pre-finals.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, that was going to be my only question on the house, like.
That's one of the questions I got about.
Yeah.
Each one, individual, how many times you have to go back?
I almost feel like it's too low.
I got two or three other ones.
Well, that's why I think we review it.
I'm going to bring, bring up next time.
There's another part added to it was building permit renewal fees.
Yeah.
Before it's twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, I like that. The way you did it. I, I don't like the old.
Yeah, there's no incentive for that.
I like the new one.
Yeah, no incentive for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
And that has to go over, you know, with, that the things you have, the building permit is pretty substantial to fire remote to get it done.
That's, that's another one I have a question on, but I like what you did.
Mike, could you also bring the old numbers? What the old numbers were? You can't see me, can you?
The old, the old fee schedule?
The old numbers.
Yeah. I got that.
That's what I just gave back, so it's a good.
Thanks.
Okay. And then stretch code. So we talked a little bit about it at the last meeting. And I know you, you have some hesitations on it. And I think we all got, did we all get a copy of that, Lori, or no?
No.
No. So, you want to explain what the stretch code is, Mike?
Yeah, stretch codes are New York State Energy Code. Not necessarily on steroids, but it's more than what the state is putting out. It's, it's promulgated by NYSERDA. And, you know, the insulation values in the house are more, the window values are more mechanicals. Pumps, motors, commercials. It all adds up. On a new house, it'd be probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more, just with the energy code.
This is also pre-wiring for solar panels and then electric charging stations.
There's a lot to it. I don't like.
But we also talked that, that, with President Biden's new push, and then the governor and the state could mandate this. Or will mandate it soon, but we're just not sure when.
I believe they're trying to get it into the next post cycle, right, in the next two or three years.
So we've.
There's a lot of instruction for it, you know, through Home Builders Association and other builders.
Really where it affects us is, is Mill Street because those are the only, the, the last billable lots, and then any commercial development, it affects that. So that's where the two, you know, we have to think about. So is this, you know, this does, would get us points towards our Clean Energy Community Scorecard. And then it also would help us with, you know, if we're, you know, one of the municipalities that jumped on early, because I think it's going to happen. I don't think, I don't think it's if, I think it's when.
Eventually, but, you know. Re- handed or.
It's, it's, we're, we're in a fortunate spot and an unfortunate spot. A fortunate spot that we don't have a lot left. You know, like I know Manoa's got a hundred and thirty houses left. I can see where Manoa says, mm, and I can see where the town says, mm. You know, there's still a lot of building left and, but I think it's somewhere where we're going to be eventually, and I think it's a good for the environment. I think it's good for the, we should be looking at this because we're seeing more and more of the solar panels and the electric car charge stations and the things like that. We, we are lead certified here. Nextdoor is Silver Certified, you know, so everything we did, we tried to do that when we built these buildings. Here, we spent a hundred thousand additional to make sure that we were lead certified, and I know Nextdoor was a sizable amount of money, so.
I mean, it's good for municipalities with taxpayer money funding or the buildings and stuff, but building code's a minimum standard of building a house. You can only build it to the minimum standard. You gotta build it bigger, better. More and better, better products. I don't see where, you should make it mandatory. Start out as the biggest, greatest building you can build.
And I agree with that, but I think, two things. I think we're going to be forced to do it in the next budgets or the next code upgrade. And two, I think it's, it is the right thing to do. It's just how much, you know, does it create an unfair burden on, say, the builder or the person buying that house? And I don't want to do that, but I also don't want to shirk our responsibility to do what we're going to have to do anyways.
Well, the thing I said at the last meeting still is my opinion. The safety aspects of it. So, you know, you've got a fire department that's responding to calls, and if somebody builds a house and then adds these types of things, like a car charging area in their garage, solar roof panels, things like that. You know, there isn't, they can just do that on their own. You're not going to see who's in that garage doing the wiring and if they're doing it right or wrong or anything else. If you're building brand new, I see the benefits of, given the way the country is going for right now, and society has gone over the last several years with energy and things like that. I really don't see that it's a bad, really a bad thing to enforce that and make that happen in the right way. Because then, as they're adding these things, it's inspected as the house is being built, as opposed to not being inspected ninety-nine percent of the time.
Do you see stuff like a battery wall battery or any of those big?
We weren't able to find the solar panels, but.
Any other questions?
If you had to go in a house and you saw one, you'd have everyone know.
Let's get, let's get the trustees a copy of the stretch code.
Next time, that's another thing I want.
And I think we got to look at it. Okay. If we can get hard copies of the trustees.
I got two or three. I got two or three questions.
It's all two-twenty, that's all.
Is the town looking at it?
If, if you're interested, I'm pretty sure there's a recording. We've had a presentation on it. It was in West May, when it first came out. It was a whole hour of presentation, and then we got a couple of shorter ones. And basically, it's saying, this is better for you, it's better for the environment, you'll save money on your electric bill, but it's more expensive upfront.
Yeah, they will pay me now or pay me later, you know what I mean? Yeah, right.
So, you know, just when you're going down this road, I believe it is the way of the future. I think it's the right thing to do. But please take into consideration, you're putting solar panels on a roof on lightweight construction, which is adding weight. If we're looking at doing something like this, it'd be a great time to put a sprinkler system in the house. Because sending firefighters in that house with all that extra weight and the batteries on it, and it's a lightweight construction, you're not talking about the old timber stuff. You know, that's more of a hazard for the guys.
My brother moved into a house in Philly this weekend, and I looked, and there is the sprinklers and his, where he lives, they had to put them in. They had no choice.
It is cheap, cheap, cheap now to do.
We've done it a little bit in the hallways or in the stairways coming out, but yeah, this whole house was done.
It seems like the first floor, they're doing stairwells and kitchens more than any, I know. So.
So let me ask you one question, Mike, about this. I, I, you know, I mean, I'm not saying, if somebody puts stroke, but like solar panels in or something like that. Right now, we don't have, we don't have a permit for that.
We do.
Yeah, we do. Oh, yeah, we passed that.
Okay, so you go and you say, okay, your, your structure is strong enough to hold these up?
Well, I review the documents, and an engineer will tell me that it's been structurally reviewed.
So what do we charge for that permit?
Uh, well, I think we have the solar, right?
So we would have to then pay an engineer then?
No, they, the applicant will.
And that takes us off the.
Solar panels are a hundred dollars on this fee schedule.
Yeah, but I know. That takes us off the.
Okay.
Because I got a few questions on that.
How do you put on one of those battery fires? Those batteries catch on fire? How do you put one of those out?
Well, you can use a magnesium extinguisher.
C.
Something with CO2.
C for current.
So you have it.
A for ash.
Yeah.
B for black smoke. C for current.
What'd you say?
Forget those. A, A for ash. That's the fire extinguisher. B for black smoke, C for current, D for magnesium. Did I get it right? Yeah, you never forget this.
Very good.
That's the right fire extinguisher for the fire. Okay. Thank you, Michael. Okay, Omni Renewables, I just, we haven't talked about it since, but I, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with Omni Renewals. And that if there is any finder fees, that the money goes to our tree commission to help plant trees in the village.
Thank you, Nate.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Roundtable.
Did I invite everybody? I didn't.
Yes, everybody said yes.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna have Webner, the thirty.
Webner. Okay.
And it's going to be on competition today.
Okay. Dennis, how do you think?
Just a quick update on the dog park that we've mentioned briefly. I have gotten three quotes. One of them had to be, he forgot to put a bottom rail quote in there, so he's adjusting that. Once I get that back, I'll review it with the Parks Committee, and then we'll bring back the recommendation to us, and then we'll go, we'll take it from there.
Somehow, I was there two weeks ago, somebody, they pulled up same time I did, and they're like, oh, where's the dog park? And I go, and they said, oh, we heard this is going to be, this is a dog park. And I said, well, your timing's not bad. It's going to be a dog park.
Yeah.
You know, you can follow me and walk, and so she did, and she had a great time.
Yep.
But there was, I think I told you, there was a, you know, a couple tree, teaching their son how to ride a bike in the, what do you call those things?
Yeah.
And then there was a man all the way at the bottom in the new part, and he was having a great time. And then there was a man, another father and son walking.
Yeah.
It was just.
It's a great part.
It was nice to see.
Yeah. The dog park, the way the, the, just so everyone knows, the way the Parks Committee envisioned it is to be quite a bit of it into the tree line. So it'll be very unique compared to other dog parks that tend to be out in the middle of the, in the middle of a field or something. So it'll be some places that it's grass and open, but there's quite a bit into that tree line, which is very open and really not a bad place for a dog to be running out, and the Parks Committee will help clean all that space up. And so they got a really nice plan, and we'll just got to see if we can make it work.
Okay.
What's, what's the cost then, then?
Well, I mean, like I said, they're not, they're not right. So I mean, I, it's, there's a variance between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand. That's the span right now, but one of them has to be adjusted, and then I'll, then I'll have something equal to compare. It's a lot of fence. And steel's not inexpensive.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Dennis?
No, that's it.
Pam?
Thanks.
I have a couple of things, Earth Day being one of them. Four good-sized groups came out for Earth Day. We had around fifty people, ages eight to eighteen for the children and quite a few adults. I sent out pictures to everybody, and Karen will be putting those pictures on the website soon and on social media. And I saw bags all over the place, so it looks like the whole community really came out for it. And I, I don't know where all these guys popped up from, but it was a very overall great clean for the whole community.
Just that little area we did, we had three bags, you know, so.
We had a lot, a lot of great finds.
We found a piston with a motor, like a, and then a valve.
The Girl Scouts found a golf club and a tire and an oar.
Nice.
Okay.
Yeah. I had another thing. This is a little bit of a proposal. I started off with an idea for a new celebration. But it has really evolved more into a beautification fundraiser with a nod towards the tree commission. And the other day, a couple weeks ago, rather, when Dan was talking about the cherry blossoms within the village, it made me start to think about how enhanced we could make the village, well, I thought that we could have a celebration of these cherry blossoms. And.
Crab apple blossoms.
Oh, you say crab, crab apple?
Crab apple.
I thought, okay. Well, I thought about the cherry blossoms that, that we have. We could also.
And why she did.
Oh, okay. Well, we could make it a crab apple blossom.
Okay.
Okay, crab apple blossom.
The white ones are.
Pears.
You could call a flowering tree maybe.
Maybe.
Okay, well, here, here's my idea, is that we have next year during the blossoming time of year for those two weeks, we have a celebration. And I had a plan to have, I went to talk to Aspinalls, and I asked them about. And I had a plan to have, I went to talk to Aspinalls, and I asked them about whether or not they had a certain type of tree that can be sold, and, and then as like a fundraiser, and they do have a certain standard, a certain size and everything that can be sold. And I had an idea to have it in three different levels, silver, gold, and platinum, and we sell a tree, we get it at a certain price, and then we sell a tree for a hundred and fifty dollars for a silver level, and they get a tree and say, one of our shopping bags, you know, the, the village shopping bags. And then at a gold level, for $200, they get a tree and a shopping bag and maybe a t-shirt. And then at the platinum level, for $250, they get a tree, a shopping bag, maybe two t-shirts, and then one of those, some kind of garden spinning thing or something like that. At the silver level, we get a profit of $50. At the gold level, we get a profit of $75. And at the platinum level, we get a profit of $100. And later, I would hope that if people can also, they can buy these trees to plant for themselves, but they could also adopt a tree, and they could donate it so that it can be planted anywhere in the village, donating it to the tree commission, to have it planted wherever, on public property, or on village property. We could, you know, pay, make it go into having it be something that we make a celebration of it further.
Yeah. Yeah. I like, I like the concept, and I'm not sure about whether we can make money or what. I'm not going to say we can't, but we can. But I would say, let's work with the tree commission, and then see what we, maybe it's a day of planting too, or, you know, if someone buys a tree and we help plant it, maybe that's part of the process, you know? So we're helping educate people how to plant them right, and how to maintain them and take care of them, and maybe it's a little bit of.
So it's not a fundraiser idea for beautification going towards the.
I, I, we just want to make sure that we, you know, everything that we raise for the beautification goes towards that, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, so.
We have to just look at it. It might be a way to help offset the tree budget or something.
Right.
We gotta, we gotta think about it a little bit more, but I'll be glad to work with it and the tree, and coordinate with the tree commission about that idea, so that we can see, because you also have to have, if they're going to donate them to the village, we have to have spaces for them, so we want to look at the type of tree, and where they can be planted, and what we need, and things like that. Because they try to diversify the trees throughout the village, so it's a great idea. We just got to look at, you know, maybe there's a few types of trees that you can purchase that way, or whatever, but we'll, we, definitely something worth looking into.
We planted too many of them.
That's a good point, Mike, because I was actually going to say, they, I know they want to make sure they're not planting a specific kind of tree everywhere, so then disease can come in like we have with the home.
And we did that before. We planted too many at once, and then they all.
Maybe there is three or four different kinds.
That's happened to a lot, that's happened to a lot of your trees in Brookside, because they left those, you know, certain maple trees, and now they're all going bad, or they have gone bad and stuff, so that's why, you know, they've been actively working in Brookside with trees and stuff like that, because, you know, too many of the same tree, not that, so we just got to look at it. It's, it's all a great idea. We got to just see what we got and where.
But I like the concept. I think it's a great, you know what I mean? It's something that we've never done, and I think that's something we should look at. Yeah. Because Dan's right, and you're, you know, you saw it, it looked beautiful. I mean, and there's still some trees that look really beautiful, you know? There's some magnolias and some others that are still very, very pretty. So I like the concept. So, anything else, Pam?
Okay.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, you said that next meeting we'll have a dear report.
Yep. We got it emailed to us, and I think we followed, yeah, okay.
I'll make sure that people have it. I, a couple of things I want to talk about. Our recreation is planning on having a playground. It's going to be limited to a certain number, and, you know, it's going to follow the rules that you got to go through. Monday, Saturday, at eight to 10 is drop-off for the Bike and Blades Sale, which is a service really that the recreation committee does for the people of the village. People drop off bikes, other people come in at 10 o'clock and buy them, and at 10:17, all the bikes are gone. So, that's, that's Saturday. Thanks to the fire department for providing a place for it. And two weeks ago, after we had the vote on the project at the bottom of the hill, on a Saturday, I had five phone calls. I don't know whether it was people that got together and said, let's call Dan. I tried to shift them over to Mark, but.
Thank you for that.
Mainly saying thank you, and my question is, okay, what are we going to do there? Well, I didn't get any answers. I got some strange answers. But all five of them said one thing. You're having the parade, correct?
That's the.
Five different people. Now, I don't know whether they got together. I know a couple of them could have. Because, I mean, a month, two months, a month and a half ago, I said, let's have a parade. So I, I can remember that.
We said that last.
I talked to Karen today.
And I pushed, and I pushed, and I saw Dan Delaney, and right away, and he pushed, and he said, yeah, I said, yeah, we're having it. So I think Dan spread the.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah, I know, but I thought that Dan Delaney said that.
Karen was just reaching out today, because if, if you read online with the CDC guidelines in the counties, it's, there's some interpretation, so we were just reaching out just to finalize.
It's difficult.
Yes, but the idea that I said is, we're going to plan to have a parade. Obviously, it's going to be scaled down, scaled back a little bit, but we're going to move forward. And if something changes, or the county comes back and says we have to do something different, we'll do that.
Okay, so.
So right now, the plan is to host and have a parade.
And that's what I, I tell all the people walking along the creek there. The other thing that I had is, I don't know, I happen to get involved in that traffic as well with.
Is that the letter we got? Okay. That's out of.
Yeah, the email that came.
When I go to church from now on, I walk in, because I'm not going to get caught.
I got a call on it, and I also got God in it.
The lady that lives in, she, that's not in the village.
Right.
I was where she was. It's the one right outside. I, I don't know what we're going to do.
Okay. Okay. Mike?
I'll have a couple of things. Manlius Historical in conjunction with the YMCA is having a historical walkthrough Manlius on May 10th. So we'll see if we can't get them to do a historical walkthrough Fayetteville too, because this is something that they want to do ongoing and things, so we'll try and work on that. We are planning on our annual meeting in June, and we're going to request the use of the Fayetteville Senior Center. They have the nice porch, they have Parnell Hall, which we can open up to itself because of those doors, which was a good idea. And they also have the lawn if it's a nice evening and things, and that will be, I think, the Thursday, the third Thursday of June. I don't have the date with me, but we're working on that. And so we will be working on some more programs. They also, during the last year with COVID and not being open to the public, they've been posting a lot of things on Face, on the Facebook page of Manlius Historical, and they've had thousands of visitors, and it's very interactive with people that make comments about some of their stuff, so even though they haven't been able to provide for the public, they've been able to provide through the internet. So, that's all I have.
Cool. Well, I thought Mike was going to say something, but the other night at the annual library, or the annual senior center meeting, Mike talked about a group that disenfranchised or whatever. Is that what?
Want me to tell him?
Yeah, would you please? I was hoping you were going to say something.
The Fayetteville Senior Center, of course, once it was established, and Congressman George Wortley was very, former Congressman George Wortley was very instrumental in a lot of the funding, I think, and a lot of the creation of the senior center. So there was a board formed, and it was called the Congressman George C. Wortley Foundation, and they, for years, had an annual golf tournament, which basically kind of funded some of the, this foundation. The foundation was created to offset the village contribution to the annual contribution to the Fayetteville Senior Center. And over the years, of course, things kind of went astray with the golf tournaments being so prevalent, popular, that it wasn't as profitable and things, so the money that had been raised over several years has been invested, and so the investment has grown quite a bit. There's, I believe, around $240, $50,000 in that fund right now. With, again, the lack of participation of board people, as far as new board people coming in and understanding and knowing what's going on with that. It was voted upon by the board to turn the funds over to the Community Foundation here in Syracuse, so that the George C. Wortley name would continue on as this fund. And the fund is designated to still provide whatever is available each annual year to the Fayetteville Senior Center. One of the last things before the money gets turned over to the Community Foundation, which will be happening soon, is that they made a donation to the Fayetteville Senior Center towards its new furnishings, not only furniture, but kitchen equipment, things that they need there, in the amount of $20,000. So that was given to the Fayetteville Senior Center for items, not operating costs, but just physical items that will be there for the benefit of the seniors at the Fayetteville Senior Center. Going forward, they should get approximately, and this is just, you know, obviously keyed by the investment type of income, they should get like $8,000 to $10,000 as an annual stipend from the Community Foundation, and that will be used towards whatever the needs are at the center. It's not designated for long-term or physical items. It could be used for operations, it could be used for whatever their needs are to, to enhance and support the seniors that participate at the senior center.
Good. Good. It's nice.
Sorry, Mike.
No, it's okay. Kind of passed it over, but.
Okay. Lori?
Well, you went out to Fairfield and Bishop Drive and looked.
So if you look.
I emailed it to you.
So I went there and looked. There's no stop sign there. We got a call from a resident. And actually, when I was taking the picture, there was a lady walking her dog, and I told her what was going on. She said, oh, I've been thinking about that. So, we need a motion to put a stop sign at the corner of Fairfield and Bishop, as they come down.
So moved or seconded, whatever.
Moved by Pam, seconded by Mike, so it'll be at the corner of Bishop and Fairfield on the.
Just one.
Yeah, on the east, is that east?
Just on Fairfield, right?
Yes.
Just on Fairfield.
Fairfield, just on Fairfield, yep.
Down the hill.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I just wonder who goes down.
The other thing I have, the landscape bidding bids, we got two, we were trying to.
Just be pulled over by Bishop.
We have two of them for Outfront and Parks, Landscapes East and J&amp;J Landscaping. So low bidder is J&amp;J Landscaping by, I think it's like $200, but I don't know what we want to do with it, because there's been concern over the work in the past.
After we reviewed, after Pat took some of that, we saw what happened over the years. It's just been mounted and mounted, and I don't know if we, if they did us any favors, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and hire the Landscapes East, I think, for the $200 more.
Second.
So, and we'll try it, see how it goes.
Take it away.
What's that?
Have them take that away.
We're going to have, we told them that was part of it. They're going to have to scrape it off and get rid of it.
I feel like they're going to do it.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The other thing I had, it dates on the renewal, our contract with them is up for the first for the spring construction for this building and fire department, is $100.
So moved.
Yeah, we do, we have to do them both. Our code enforcement officer will make sure that we do them both. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the only other thing you run up.
So, we got a, an email from a resident, a neighbor of this resident, but the bottom line is, we had a tree, the tree commission looked at 2018 that had to be trimmed and could be taken down. Flash forward three more years later, they said that they contacted the DPW, they contacted the trees, they contacted somebody in a station wagon. They were very nice, they didn't want anything from the village, but they took a village tree down. I, I said, listen, and I'm going back and talking to the tree Leslie, we should have taken the tree down. It was scheduled, should have been done. It wasn't in power lines, so the DPW could have taken it down. So I'd like to make a motion that we reimburse the resident for half, and they'd be more than thrilled of $700 to take this tree down. They paid $1,400, and I have the bill in front of me, so.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any other, and, and I talked to him, I said, listen, we just, this isn't the way we work. We apologize. Please call Karen in the future, and then Karen will give it to Leslie.
Right.
So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ted, anything?
No.
Okay. So, Earth Day, Pam, again, thank you very much. We haven't done Earth Day in a long time, so thank you so much. That was, it was great to see everybody, and it was great to get that many people out, and there is more stuff than we think about. When you, when you look for it, you can find it, so thank you very much for that. The, the county is asking to change their days. I met with Lori. They're having less and less people getting the COVID tests, so what they've asked us to do is change it to two, two smaller sessions. Lori, there was no impact. I just want to make sure no one here has any concerns. So we went from Mondays to Wednesdays to Fridays, now we're going to go.
I think it's Tuesday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are.
Just for a couple hours.
Just for a couple hours. So, anybody have any concerns with that?
Okay. That's good news.
The senior center invitation-only grand opening will be on May 3rd, next Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. We have to keep it under 20, but open houses from 10 to 4 for everybody else. We sent, I got you two. I think everybody here is RSVP'd, so Karen will be reaching out to everybody. So try to be there at like quarter off, 9, if you could, so we can get ready and staged. Marguerite, maybe you can help me. I don't know the times, but there was that garage, I, I think, the whole neighborhood, my neighborhood, I got a flyer in my thing, but I wanted, there's a garage sale on Saturday from 9, I think, to 1, I think it is. But normally, when we do a garage sale like that, a neighborhood garage sale, we should get board approval. They haven't asked for that, but I think we should. I'd like to get it, just to make sure that we're covered. It's for the whole, our, where Marguerite lives and I live, it's 9 to 1 for a garage sale on Saturday.
Say that again?
I wasn't involved in setting it up.
Over, over his name, where he is.
Yeah, I got the flyer too.
Over Cameron.
For any garage...
It's 9 to 3.
9 to 3.
But the idea is...
For a big group sale.
They are saying that individual homeowners can have flexibility about their hours. They're not doing a group registration necessarily. It's just like, they wanna put up with signs a little bit in advance.
Yeah.
And if you've got stuff to sell, you're out there with it. If you don't, you don't...
It's just to tell, so the fire department knows in case there's a call. The police department knows in case they have phone calls. That's why we like, if, like Brookside used to have it, and they used to ask the boards. Not, we're not gonna deny it, but it's good to let the departments know that there's something going on in case there's an incident there, so...
Do you wanna know who's...
No, I know. It's Podesta and Jennifer Osada. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I think we should put it on the record.
So I'll make a motion about the garage sale and...
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have an executive session for advice of counsel. There'll be no news, or no, nothing done after that. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, you need a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we can go to my office.
Mike, for the start, because it's gonna be such a massive motion about everybody.
Second.